I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilor Clemens?
Excused.
Councilor Landryvin?
Present.
Councilor Livinggood?
Present.
Councilor Markucci?
Present.
Councilor McDonald?
Present.
Councilor Nicola?
Present.
Councilor Regis?
Present.
Councilor Spinelli?
Present.
Councilor Vandal?
Present.
Eight present?
Thank you. Agenda item number three, consider and accept the council minutes of Monday, February 27th.
Sub moving.
Second. Any discussion?
Abstain.
Abstain, Madam Chair.
Okay. The abstentions are for those who weren't here at the meeting. All in favor? Okay, three abstentions and five. Thank you. Agenda item number four, Subcommittee Reports, General Government, Counselor Spinelli.
Madam Chair, we had a General Government Subcommittee meeting on last Thursday, the 8th. I don't have any minutes on it yet. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No meetings scheduled at this time?
No ma'am.
Thank you. Agenda item number four B, DPW, Counselor Vandal?
No minutes and no report and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number C is Education and Human Services. A meeting of the EHS Subcommittee was held on Tuesday, March 6th, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were Chairwoman Clemens, Committee members Darlene Markucci, Citizen Member Holly Cristo, also in attendance was myself, Counselor Landryvin, Town Manager Clark, Counselor Regis, Roland Barron, Walter Byrd, Bob Gronn, Gary Briere, and Gus Steves. Council Chairwoman Clemens called the meeting to order at 7:04. Agenda item number one, vote to approve the appointment of Linda Jowett to the Cultural Commission for a three-year term to expire June 30th, 2015. Town Manager Clark advised she was recently appointed to the Historical Commission and was a participant in the senior work-off program. A motion was made by Counselor Markucci and seconded by Holly Cristo with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the appointment of Linda Jowett to the Cultural Commission for a three-year term to expire June 30th, 2015. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, four to nothing. Agenda item number two, vote to approve the appointment of Jackie Varren to the Recreation Committee for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2014, to fill the vacancy left by the resignation of Wallace McKenzie on February 20th, 2012. Town Manager Clark stated, "Mrs. Varren has attended meetings for a couple of years and has shown willingness and dedication." A motion was made by Counselor Markucci, seconded by Holly Cristo with a favorable recommendation to council to approve this appointment. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, four to nothing. Agenda item number three was DCR Representative Gary Briere presented an update on the detailed schedule of events and program design for the AJ Petro Pool, Randolph Street, and discussed alternate plans for the summer 2012 program. Discussions were held about the following. Construction begins around March 15th, between March 15th and March 20th, and will be completed by Labor Day. Project cost is under $2 million. New England builders of Methuen, Mass. will do the work. The pool will have a five-foot depth maximum, zero-depth entry, two swimming lanes, slide and spray areas to accommodate all ages. There are three buildings that will be available to house bathrooms, snack bar, and lifeguard station within the existing location. The parking area can accommodate between 50 to 70 vehicles. There will be motion sensor lights for security and there is a, right now, there is a fence surrounding the area. All of these items were the subject of discussion in the Subcommittee. Further discussion was held about the partnership agreement and the state-to-town transition and the need for the town to establish a mechanism right away in the community. Town Manager Clark advised that he would like to vote on the concept for the alternate plans to continue with the Streeter Point Cops and Kids Program for the summer of 2012. Counselor Markucci made a motion, vote to accept a contract with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for the operation of an alternate site for the 2012 summer program upon receipt of the contract. This was seconded by Holly Cristo. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, four to nothing. Other business, Town Manager Clark discussed the next steps of the Bay Path Project. A video presentation of the Bay Path Project will be made available to the public. Motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Markucci, seconded by Holly Cristo. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, four to nothing. The meeting adjourned at 8:26 PM. Respectfully submitted Stacy Reno, recording clerk. I believe Counselor Clemens has a meeting scheduled for EHS for March 22nd. Okay. D, Planning and Development, Counselor Livinggood?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a meeting on March 8th. We don't have any minutes available yet, but we did discuss and vote to ascend to the council items 13 and 14, which is about rezoning of two town properties. And we have another meeting scheduled for March 15th, and I'm not sure of the time just yet, but I'll know tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. E, Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Landryvin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A meeting on Protection of Persons and Property Subcommittee was held on Wednesday, March 7th, 2012, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were Chairman Landryvin, Subcommittee Members Counselor Regis, Counselor Livinggood, and Citizen Member Roger Kowett. Also in attendance were Counselor Nicola, Counselor McDonald, Town Manager Clark, and Estelle Kowett. Chairman Landryvin called the meeting to order at 7 o'clock. Agenda item number one, review and discuss and vote to accept recruitment process to fill the Fire Chief's position. Mr. Clark discussed the amendment made to the last proposed recruitment process. He said, "He has discussed these changes with a current Fire Chief to get important and was told this is a better criteria process." Discussion and input was offered by all committee members. A motion was made by Counselor Livinggood and seconded by Roger Kowett with a favorable recommendation to the council to accept the recruitment process to fill the Fire Chief's position with the changes discussed at this meeting. Votes by a show of hand, all in favor, was four to nothing. A motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Regis, seconded by Counselor Landryvin. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, four to nothing. This meeting was adjourned at 8:05 PM. Respectfully submitted by Evelyn Rivera, the recording clerk. Madam Chair, as it said in the meeting minutes, this is on our agenda tonight. Agenda item 11, and it did come in favor for this. I have no meeting scheduled at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes, Counselor.
I have some concerns about these minutes. We just read for C, for the Human Services Subcommittee, which is quite extensive, exactly a good record of what took place at that meeting. This one here, to be summed up, that discussion and input was offered by all committee members with no, absolutely no record of what those discussions were, what changes were made. I think just does that process a disservice, especially when we're talking on such an important matter as the recruitment and filling of a Fire Chief position. There was a recorder that I remember, as far as a voice recorder available there. I think we should have a little bit more substance to these minutes than what's here. As to who recommended what, what changes were adopted predicated upon the difference between what was in our packet and what was the final outcome. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. If it's possible, can we have a revision of these minutes based on the fact that there was a recording? This was recorded. The meetings are all recorded, for those who are in the audience. We do record our Subcommittee meetings. It makes it a lot easier for the person who's taking notes and trying to record. So if we could possibly take this one back and have a little bit more substance to what did take place. It was a fairly lengthy meeting. As you can see, the meeting started at 7:00 and it ended at 8:05, so there was quite a bit of discussion.
Just, Madam Chair, yeah, actually, what I will do is, actually, it's a stylistic difference. There's two different people that recorded it. One was recorded, actually, by Stacy here, and then the other one was recorded by Evelyn. And I will talk to Evelyn and see if we can get additional substance in general and specifically in terms of this, because they have been getting shorter and shorter, and I think we need to strike a better balance. Because actually, you're not the first that has brought this to my attention, but I think it is something I do need to address.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor, and thank you, Mr. Clark. Okay. Moving on, Agenda item number five, Chairwoman's Announcements. I just have a few. First of all, Agenda item number 12 is a vote that we're going to postpone until we have more information. At this time, I don't feel we're ready to vote on this without enough information. So we are postponing this vote this evening. I had the opportunity yesterday to attend. Young man in town, John Dmitri Jovan III, attained the status of Eagle Scout. It was quite impressive. I'd like to congratulate him publicly. Congratulations. It was a very nice ceremony held at the Trinity Auditorium, and there were quite a few people in attendance, including our State Representative, Town Manager was there, and quite a few Eagle Scouts. I'm amazed at how many Eagle Scouts we have in the area. That's quite an achievement. Other than that, right now, I have nothing. I'd like to turn it over to the Town Manager for his announcements. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do apologize in advance. I do have several of these, just to work my way through them. In terms of Carlos Dingy, Sergeant Dingy is one of the police officers that's assigned to making sure that we keep the trash bylaw enforcement, and he has sent me an update that as of February 1st, 2012, that there have been 69 verbal warnings that have been issued to landlords and/or tenants, and 50 written citations that have been issued to landlord or tenants. I have asked the sergeant to keep us up to date in terms of the enforcement efforts on this, so want to just relay that information. Received information from our Community Development Block grant, and they are seeking applicants for the Housing Rehabilitation Program in the Morris and Coombe Street area, as well as the Worcester Henry Street neighborhood target areas. Assistance is given in the form of deferred payment loans to owner occupants who qualify for our income-based program. These special home improvement loans are forgiven if you retain ownership and residence for 15 years. Applicants must use their, applicants must own their own homes for at least a year and have a well-established record of timely payments. For information in regards to this, please contact the Economic Development and Planning Office at 508-764-5402 for an application and the map of the target area. Also, just as an item of interest, the Harrington Healthcare has sent over some material to us that they are now offering, what they call a travel clinic, at their facility at 164 South Street, in which people can get assistance in immunizations, food and water safety, and insect repellent. If you are planning on traveling, they do have this new service that they are offering. And for contact information, it says contact the travel clinic by calling 508-765-8196, and visits are by appointment only. So I thought that was an interesting new service to offer to folks, especially folks that may travel. Now, this one, actually, it does say, got drugs, so I'm not just making that up, but it got drugs. Turn in your unused or expired medication for safe disposal. The date for this activity is Saturday, April 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This is actually put on by the DEA, so it says, visit www.dea.gov or call 800-882-9539 for a collection site near you. So if you do have drugs from someone that's in your, I presume, prescription drugs, if you have leftover prescription drug that you want to find a safe way to get rid of it, we do not encourage you to put it down in the toilet. That hurts the environment. That, please, look into this, and if you're interested in the program, contact the DEA to see a site near you. We are setting up some preliminary, 2012 Earth Day event is going to be Saturday, April 14th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., rain or shine, and that's going to start off at the Southbridge Town Common. Bad weather, go to the community center, and it's an effort to keep the community looking good. I will do additional information on this as we get closer to the event. For additional details, you are encouraged to preregister, www.thinkreduce.com. As we get closer to that, I will mention that. Also, with our Homeowner Initiative that we've been having, Make Southbridge Home, we have a group that is putting on a free workshop. The workshop is Wednesday, March 28th, 2012, from 5:30 to 7:30 at Savers Bank, which is 270 Main Street here in Southbridge. Space is limited, and they encourage, if you're interested, to sign up. Two ways to contact, Pam Mosheer, 978-630-6791, and then P. Mosheer, M-O-S-H-I-E-R, at RCAP, R-C-A-P solutions dot org. This is a group that helps folks to put together the financial wherewithal to be able to purchase a home, and this is something that's being done in collaboration with our Make Southbridge Home campaign. And just a couple more things. You can't be Irish and not at least mention St. Patrick's Day once. So the library is holding an event, Boys of the Town, on this Thursday, March 15th, at 6:30, and it just reads, "Get ready for St. Patrick's Day." The Boys of the Town will perform traditional Irish music, jigs, reels, and toe-tapping songs. The Boys of the Town are Hunter Foot on fiddle, John Ebersole on guitar and vocals, and Tim Loftus on flute, whistle, and baldran. The unique blend of traditional Irish tunes, original songs, and favorite covers, it covers as a guarantee to leave audiences of all ages skipping in their, skipping their step in a song in their hearts. And then that event is sponsored by the Southbridge Cultural Council. The town is in the process of attempting to sell additional buildings. We have made an effort previously to sell some surplus town buildings. The council had previously voted to declare some of these buildings surplus. I have made a concerted effort to get the RFP out, and actually, today, we distributed the RFP for 114 Pleasant Street, known as the McKinnon Building, and shortly, we will have the 115 Marcy Street building out as well. I have revised the criteria, and we'll be bringing that to Subcommittee to inform them. Basically, the previous times that we went out, we insisted upon only the appraised value, and we have provided some flexibility in that, and I will bring that to council so they are aware of that in an effort to try to get some interest in both of these buildings. Both of these buildings were advertised, I think, once or twice, and no one, no one bid on them when they were advertised two years ago. And then, lastly, this is just more of a heads-up for the members of the council, something that could conceivably be coming before the council in fairly short order. We do have a situation in which we have several Mill Street condos from 102 to 122 that have been in a state of significant disrepair. The building inspector has warranted that they are a public nuisance, and we are commencing the process to commence demolition of that material. That is an 11-unit complex, and the cost to demolish it will probably be in the neighborhood of $50,000. We do have some money in the accounts, and I will bring back to council with the funding plan to do that. But on the other side of the street, we do have 11 occupied units with little kids, and I think it is presenting a significant public safety hazard to the community and one that we will proceed to address in short order. And that concludes my comments this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Agenda item number seven, swearing-in, presentations, anything like that this evening. I don't believe we have anything on the agenda for that. So I'm going to move right to eight. Citizens Forum, are there any citizens who wish to come forward, something?
James Sotilly, Pinedale Street, Southbridge. Since our last town election cycle in 2011, many people have noticed that they've approached this podium with a consistent appeal, at the very least, three times, and asked our elected representatives to publicly tender what they have accomplished to reverse the persistent reduction in the overall quality of life for the constituents. I have to, I have, to date, never heard that question answered, even to the extent of following our band of reactionaries on the road to a meeting in another jurisdiction where many promises were advanced and yet to be consummated. The roadmap from that episode has reinforced everyone's foregone conclusions that the majority membership of this body opposes progressive social or political change. It seems to me that the people of Southbridge, our Commonwealth and our country, by their past conduct and example, have struggled with one particular, very important question. Are micro societies of men and women really capable or not of establishing good government, either from reflection or choice? Or whether they are forever destined to depend, for their political constitutions, on accident and force? I rather hope to see it to be neither, but arrived at by common sense and intelligent action. For several years, many have observed how the town of Southbridge has become somewhat stagnant, both politically and economically. In addition to the inevitable slippery slope created because of misguided fixes to stem our present downward spiral, I am not going to decipher that entangled series of conundrums tonight. Suffice it to say that we are here now as a consequence of unintended circumstances that has been created by, albeit, well-meaning and misguided individuals in our service for the past 30 or more years. To the point, the present council, the present councillor, town manager, form of government, is not working to improve the political pledge of a financially viable, business-friendly, economic, and fair tax system. It is a governing system well-suited to a city with a larger population, and not suited to a small New England town with a declining population. In that regard, it has become necessary to bring an initiative petition forward to support a change in our form of local government by creating an act to revise the Southbridge Home Rule Charter. With the foregoing in mind, let me announce tonight that a large group of concerned citizens have become very active in formulating an initiative petition to be placed on the June 2012 ballot. We believe that the town meeting board of selectmen, form of government, is more appropriate to our future critical needs, both politically and one that would support increased economic growth. The petition, if approved by the voters of Southbridge, would revise the South...
Excuse me. Could you speak up, Mr. Sotilly? Obviously, somebody in the audience can't hear you.
I'm swallowing the microphone.
I understand that, and I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. The petition, if approved by the voters of Southbridge, would revise the Southbridge Home Rule Charter and restore the town meeting, selectmen, form of government. Voters can view preliminary discussion about the petition by watching the Southbridge Cable Access Channel, number 13, at 9:30 a.m. and at 4:30 p.m. each day. Several citizens are now circulating through the town, gathering signatures to allow the petition to be on the June ballot. For approval by the voters, a public hearing detailing the content of the petition is scheduled to occur in April 2012. Thank you, everyone, for your interest in sustaining democracy in New England. Again. I'd like these, I'll give a copy to the recording clerk and have these minutes placed in the minutes.
My guess, definitely. Is there anybody else that wishes to come forward? Sir, could you please remove your hat?
I live on the 150 Gretchen Park. So I'm going on the big white shopping. Cars are coming up the crosswalk, you know, I mean, I call the cops, and if someone should be down there, look at it, you know? They never did. Never looked at the crosswalk, right there, went down 150 Gretchen Park, where I live. And I'm going across. The cars coming up, I'm waiting for the stop, you know? They keep going, coming down. You know, I want someone looking in, have the cops looking in.
Howard, where do you live? I can't hear you.
150 Gretchen Park on Main Street.
Oh, okay. You live on Main Street, and what is the problem?
I'm going on the crosswalk, at the yellow-orange barrel sitting right there. I'm going across, I want shopping, food shopping.
Which crosswalk? Which one?
The one that go, the crosswalk behind my house, where I live, Gretchen Park. It's right by the Sunway. You can't miss it.
There's a crosswalk by the subway to cross Main Street? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, going down.
Nobody stops for you?
No. The cars keep coming up, I'm going down, it's a big white, shopping.
It's the one in front of the Cultural Council, the gateway?
Oh, okay. All right. Okay.
It's the yellow-orange barrel sitting right there, cars keep coming. I call the cops, they're taking a look at it, they're dinner.
Well, unfortunately, Howard, I mean, the police are all over town. That is, it is a violation if somebody, if you're trying to cross the street in a crosswalk and somebody doesn't stop to let you go out, but there's nothing really more that the council can do. If there's a barrel in the road, it's the public. It's not something that the council can address.
I know, I'm going somewhere, you know, they should have stopped, I'm going across.
I agree. They should stop. It's punishable by fine, I believe. So if nobody's stopping, there's a barrel there.
There was a cop on Main Street, I was sitting on the bench by the bank, you know? The cars, you know, you stop, you feel some feel people, there's cops in Southbridge, you know? The kid.
Well, we'll ask the chief to look into it a little bit, make sure that it's being addressed, okay, Howard?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going shopping at the big Y.
Because the council, the council, really, we're not, we can't police the town.
I know, they're doing on Main Street, by the benches, they do that. Had a cop on the street, right there, tonight.
Okay. I think the chief wants to address it.
I don't want to interrupt Howard, but I know the weather broke early. We started today, Howard. We had officers out there, and I heard them stop at least a couple of vehicles for doing just that, so with the nice weather break, and we're doing that, and we'll have at least three days during the week, in the afternoon, we'll have somebody out there, okay?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll call you. Can I call you?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Thank you, Howard. Thank you, chief, thank you, Howard. Does anybody else wish to come forward? Any other citizens? Okay, moving along. Agenda item number nine, vote to confirm the appointment of Linda Jowett to the Cultural Commission for a three-year term to expire June 30th, 2015.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? We have a roll call, please.
Councillor Landevan?
Yes.
Councillor Livinggood?
Yes.
Councillor McCucci?
Yes.
Councillor McDonald?
Yes.
Councillor Nicola?
Yes.
Councillor Regis?
Yes.
Councillor Spinelli?
Yes.
Councillor Vandal?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number ten, vote to confirm the appointment of Jackie Varon to the Recreation Committee for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2014, to fill the vacancy left by the resignation of Wallace McKenzie on February 20th, 2012.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? We have a roll call, please.
Councillor Livinggood?
Yes.
Councillor McCucci?
Yes.
Councillor McDonald?
Yes.
Councillor Nicola?
Yes.
Councillor Regis?
Yes.
Councillor Spinelli?
Yes.
Councillor Vandal?
Yes.
Councillor Landevan?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number eleven, vote to approve the recruitment process to fill the fire chief position.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Please. The manager's going to go over it a little bit so that you'll understand how that recruitment process is going to work.
Madam Chair, just, give your opportunity to get to do some free advertising, I think we should take advantage of that. In, in the recruitment process, it basically lays out two essential elements. I'm being told that the mic is not that loud, if we could, there we go. In essence, for the fire chief recruitment process, that we have two, two elements to it, one is to establish the credentials.
Thank you.
To establish the credentials of the candidates. We have here that an ideal candidate under this process would be someone that has a mid-career professional with over twelve years of experience, and that the candidate would possess a bachelor's degree in fire science or related discipline, and should have a minimum of two years of supervisory experience. We also then lay out the process that we would like to have applicants submit a cover letter, resume, employment application, as well as to provide the preliminary review criteria, also to indicate the level of NIMS training that they've received, and then the, the candidates will submit based upon this criteria, again, education, seniority, and the highest professional experience achieved are some of the primary characteristics that we're looking for, and then we do give extra credit or bonus to folks that have been honorably served or as a veteran and have, or have National Guard duty, and then also some credit for residency within Southbridge, and then also residency within Mass. And then if people obtain certification as a Fire Officer Four or Fire Officer Three, they get additional credit for that. Once those candidates are submitted, under the scoring system, a minimum of twelve points out of those criteria must be achieved in order to be, receive, to receive additional consideration, and then the additional consideration, those folks will be ranked, and then the top candidates will be selected for interview. The interview panel will consist of myself, a member of the town council, which the, the chair has agreed to serve on that, a Southbridge department head, which the police chief has agreed to serve on that, an active or recently retired fire chief, should really be within the Commonwealth. We do have the current chief of Auburn that has agreed to assist us in this process, that the panel interview will be done with questions and scenarios to gain a better understanding of the individuals that submit. At the conclusion of that panel discussion, there will be a essay format in which the candidates will be expected to draft responses to seven specific areas. Those areas would have specific questions, one in management, one in budget and finance, one in strategic planning and vision, one in fire scene management and emergency management director, one in fire prevention and safety, one also in personnel, and one in ambulance management, for the total of seven areas. They will do that essay format in the office at the conclusion of the interview, and then once the top candidates are selected, the manager decides which candidate would be chosen for the position, then a background check would be done, and subject to any manager's appointment for this position, the chief's position, is subject to final successful confirmation vote by the town council. And with a successful vote tonight, then we will put together the ad and commence the search process. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Do we have any discussion? Councillor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, as I said in the subcommittee meeting, I think this is a fair and valid process that will be, I think it takes in a good combination of experience where it doesn't just weed out somebody based upon their education or lift somebody up, it takes into consideration all those things, whether they have a good rounded base of experience and education, and I think it's going to really establish who has currency and relevancy in the field of practice. There is one thing I just still see, I mentioned at the subcommittee and I still see it here, is I'm concerned, again, about the veteran status. I think veterans' preference has to be given equally to both active duty and guard and reserve. I don't think we can discriminate between the two. In other words, I don't think we can give more points for somebody who's been on active duty as opposed to guard and reserve time, but that's the only thing I see, other than that, I am in occurrence, I mean, concurrence with it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, councillor.
Just, I, I did talk to our veterans' agent and went through carefully and showed him this, and he felt comfortable that this was okay, so I really base it upon his input that I, that I restructured it, but certainly I think I took the councillor's concerns under advisement and revised it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm satisfied with that answer.
Thank you, councillor. Anybody else have any comments? Councillor Regis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only comment I would have is, we did have a discussion regarding the definition of recently retired. The older I get, recent is ten years ago, and maybe when I was younger, it was a year ago, so for, maybe we want to just, in parentheses, just define what recent is, I think we talked about.
I think we talked about two years.
Two years, right?
Three years.
Two or three years, yeah. So if we can just do that, maybe in parentheses?
I'll put in two years. I think that makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments regarding the recruitment process? No? We have a roll call, please.
Councillor McCucci?
Yes.
Councillor McDonald?
Yes.
Councillor Nicola?
Yes.
Councillor Regis?
Yes.
Councillor Spinelli?
Yes.
Councillor Vandal?
Yes.
Councillor Landevan?
Yes.
Councillor Livinggood?
Yes.
Councillor McCucci?
Yes.
Councillor Landevan?
Yes.
Councillor Livinggood?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number thirteen, vote to approve the rezoning of 114 Pleasant Street from a two-family zone to a light industrial zone to create continuity of zoning.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Councillor Regis?
No, go ahead.
I think the councillor clerk is going to explain it a little bit.
Yes, thank you.
Could you explain yourself?
Manager clerk.
I'm sorry, manager clerk. Sorry about that, manager clerk.
That's okay. I, I just wanted to, we did receive, and I distributed this evening, a letter from the planning board, and just from a procedural standpoint, that, just to make sure we lay out and have the appropriate process, that if the council votes this this evening, that the planning, this is, I'll paraphrase, I'll actually read it, from the chairman of the planning board, "The planning board respectfully seeks your direction," this is addressed to the council chairwoman, "if so directed, the board is prepared to schedule a hearing in order to receive public comment. Following a hearing, the planning board will vote on a recommendation and forward to the council." So I think in both of these, this one and the next one, that the intent of these votes would reflect that, to send this down to planning board to continue the process of rezoning, and I just want the record to reflect that that's what the intent of these two votes would be. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Did you have, thank you, Mr. Clark. Did you have something, councillor Regis?
I did, and thank you for that explanation, because that was going to be my question, after having read this, what you passed out, is the process. But is this a cart before the horse kind of scenario? Because if we vote this, it's not a done deal, it needs to go through another process?
That, that's correct.
The public comment process?
I'm sorry, through you, Madam Chair. It's my understanding of the process, and certainly we have someone that's a little bit more knowledgeable than I, but it's my understanding that once we vote what the intent is that the board would like, the planning board goes through the due diligence to make sure that it meets into the zoning, and hence the public hearing, and then this would necessitate a bylaw change, so, a zoning bylaw change, so it would come back to us in the form of a zoning bylaw change, and would have to go through the three readings process that we have for bylaw changes. So this is, with that caveat on there, it's, it's a good question. This is not a done deal as of tonight, it's the, really, the formal commencement of a process that will ultimately, hopefully, lead to the rezoning of these two parcels.
Okay, so this vote is just sending it to planning board, having them go through their process, and then we'll go through ours after that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And perhaps just on 114 Pleasant Street, this is to go from two-family zone to light industrial, 114 Pleasant Street is one of the buildings that the town is currently attempting to sell, and it is the, known as the McKinnon Training Center, formerly known as the McKinnon Training Center, so this property is related to the, the property sale. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Does anybody else have any comments on this particular item? No? Can we have a roll call, please?
Councillor McDonald? I'm sorry, councillor McDonald?
Yes.
Sorry. Councillor Nicola?
Yes.
Councillor Regis?
Yes.
Councillor Spinelli?
Yes.
Councillor Vandal?
Yes.
Councillor Landevan?
Yes.
Councillor McCucci?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number fourteen, vote to approve the rezoning of 80 Marcy Street and the adjacent parking lot from a two-family zone to a general business zone to create contiguous zoning in that area.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Councillor? Mr. Clark?
You're on that roll tonight, Madam Chair. 80 Marcy Street is one of the five buildings that we are also in the process of attempting to sell. This one has not gone out to bid yet, it is currently our middle school, in that, in order to have a more marketable, basically, just for the public information, a government use or municipal use is generally exempt from zoning. If we were to sell that building, then the base zoning applies, and the current base zoning for that hundred thousand square foot building is a two-family zone. We do have a general business zone in the area that we can incorporate, that we are attempting in this vote to start the process, to commence to do that, to give us greater flexibility in the sale of that, of that building. So that's the intent behind this, Madam Chair, with the same caveat as before, that this commences the process with planning board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have anything to add to this, or any questions, discussion? No? Can we have a roll call, please?
Councillor Nicola?
Yes.
Councillor Regis?
Yes.
Councillor Spinelli?
Yes.
Councillor Vandal?
Yes.
Councillor Landevan?
Yes.
Councillor McCucci?
Yes.
Councillor McDonald?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number fifteen is councillor's forum. Let's start with councillor Landevan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One really quick thing, I thought it was really exciting, and just want to congratulate Mr. Trooper Alex Berry, one of our own, Southbridge-born, raised, went through the process, and a very respectable family, so I just want to say congratulations to him, and just be safe. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Spinelli?
I'd also like to agree with the town council chairperson in congratulating John Joe Van III on attainment of Eagle Scout. I personally know what is involved in accomplishing this feat, and congratulations and kudos to him. I'd also like to give a plug to the, probably going to get this wrong, but on March 15th, there is a combined concert, choral presentation, I believe it's at the high school, I'm not sure. I get this information secondhand from one of my oldest grandson, but anyway, I heard that it should be a wonderful evening. I believe there's a meal included with this, so if you'd like to have an evening where you can participate and enjoy some wonderful efforts by our younger citizens of the town of Southbridge, I would recommend that everyone go up there and enjoy this. I went to one a couple weeks ago, and one is absolutely fantastic, and less than half the seats were filled, and it's kind of a shame that these kids of ours, and the future citizens of our town, put such an effort into it, and we just don't seem to have the opportunity to attend and give them praise, and I think it would be something that, I think a great many people would go and enjoy it and have a wonderful evening there. So, good plugs to them. And lastly, to all the people who are making an effort to put their trash into barrels and to obey the bylaw, I can only say my congratulations to you. I have been a person who has called the Board of Health on numerous occasions, and have been so frustrated, I've even called the police, police chief, the town manager, to vent some of my frustrations with this, and we are getting results, and I have to tell you quite honestly, if nobody else is willing to say it, I find it an immense improvement on driving around some of the streets in Southbridge to see trash in barrels the way that it's supposed to be. It can only do us so much better in the summertime, and even though it's sometimes punitive to do this, maybe, sometimes, apparently, this is the only way we get the message, so. Thank you to the police department for issuing them, and for everyone else, and hopefully Casella can take it a little bit easy still on the barrel tops. They do end up a ways away from the barrels when they're done, and hopefully they can get their act a little bit more into gear. It would be greatly appreciated by everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Livinggood?
Thank you, Madam Chair, not much. I know Howard had brought up about the crosswalks and stuff. If there is a way that we can have something done, it seems strange that a town that has so many streetlights in it at night, you cannot see pedestrians standing at a crosswalk. And I think we need to possibly look into, I don't know whether there's a way we can put lighting just at the crosswalk shining down. There's sometimes you're driving through town, it's dark, you got cars coming at you all around you, and you just can't see the person standing there until you're right there, and I think it would behoove maybe to try to see if we can come up with some better way to make them more visible. It just, it seems strange with that many streetlights that you can't see somebody standing there, but it's, I mean, right in front of the bank, or the post office, you can't see people. And then maybe also start moving some of the parking back from the crosswalks, because I've noticed even school buses have a tendency to pull up and park next to a crosswalk, and I would say somebody crossing the street at that point would be taking their life in their hands, because there's no way you can see them. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one observation is, if the minutes aren't available from a subcommittee meeting, I think maybe we should not have something on the agenda to vote on the proceeding at the main meeting like we did tonight. I mean, I know the ones we had tonight weren't really controversial, but if it was something that is substantive, I think it's more beneficial to those of us who aren't in regular attendance at subcommittees we don't belong to, to have the minutes available if we're going to vote on it on the main meeting, and it's just a suggestion, Madam Chair. Other than that, I'd like to offer my congratulations to Eagle Scout John D. Joe Van III. I think that young man, that we're going to be hearing more from, from him as time goes on. Eagle Scout is a tremendous accomplishment, and it's certainly not a guarantee of success, but it sure is an indicator that somebody will be successful. We've had many, many general officers in the United States military who started off as Eagle Scouts, and Mr. Joe Van may be headed in that direction, and even the President of the United States was an Eagle Scout, Gerald Ford, so just congratulations to him, and also congratulations to Trooper Alex Berry. Just a tremendous opportunity for him and accomplishment to graduate the Massachusetts State Police Academy and to represent Southbridge well. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Just a quick word on Mr. Joe Van. In order to become an Eagle Scout, you actually have to put together and have quite a project. In his case, that project with, in conjunction with others, was to go into the Southbridge High School's fieldhouse, and it was cleaned, I believe they put, part of the, of the fieldhouse has been turned into storage for the high school, for the football team's equipment, and they painted and basically refurbished it, and at his ceremony, there was a slideshow showing it, and it, I've never seen the inside of a fieldhouse, the Southbridge High Fieldhouse, I have no business in there, it's for boys, but from what I've been told, it was pretty bad, and it, it looked real good, so he did a nice job.
And I thought that they were going to be working a Monday-through-Friday schedule. No?
Actually, what we had, what the Council had voted, and it's taken some time to get there, is, they operate on a different shift schedule, an eight-day shift schedule. So, they're on during basically daylight hours, and four-on means four consecutive days, and then, the next one goes on for four consecutive days for that eight-hour, the eight-hour period of time. So, the reason why it just started recently is, one person came onboard and had all the credentials to go, and then, they actually partner up with one of our existing medics to make sure that they're up to speed on our material. And I think just recently, the other candidate got up to speed on all the material, so they now have switched to that four-on, four-off schedule, which is basically the administrative, I call it the administrative schedule, but it's the daytime schedule, which is different than the 24 schedule that-
Okay.
-the rank-and-file do use.
Okay.
So, this does leave us short on one shift, but gives us a better opportunity to cover ambulance calls that come in-
And transfers.
-because the majority of ambulance calls do occur during daylight hours.
And then, transfers also. I know that we wanted to be able to take those rather than-
Yes.
-having to, for Harrington to call somewhere else. Also, if I could, again, through you, Madam Chair, to the Town Manager, I had spoken with you regarding my concerns regarding some of the insurance reimbursements that, for the ambulance.
Yes.
And I know that you had spoken with the Deputy Chief about that, and there's, I'm sorry, the Acting Chief, and there's been other articles that I've read about this, and I'm just wondering if you have, if you could provide, not tonight, but if you could provide us with something, if it is going to be a big impact for next year's budget or not.
Well, if I could, I would like to comment on some. We have done some internal changes now. One of the things that we found is that the cash flow that we had anticipated is down, but it's down because we are, we were two weeks behind on submitting materials. And one of the things we found out was that, believe it or not, we were kind of photocopying a lot of materials, putting it in a package, and then, sending it to the company, and they asked for backup information on the ambulance runs. So, we have revised the work schedule of the person that does the ambulance billing, so we do it more consistently and at a greater frequency. And we have also done it where we submit it electronically now to avoid mail issues and delay with mail. So, we have made some internal changes to make sure that we can optimize our reimbursement. But I will look at the secondary issue, which we did look at, in terms of the way some insurance companies reimburse us. And so far, we haven't seen an impact strictly from a numbers perspective to that process, but that is something that the Acting Chief knows that has to be monitored carefully.
Okay.
And we will continue to monitor it carefully and see if any trends come in.
Okay. Thank you. I know that, I was on the MMA website, and Chief Bemis from, I think it's Bemis from Oxford, actually wrote something, and it's on there, about that particular issue. So, if we could monitor it, that'd be wonderful, because I know that's a big budget issue. So, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counselor McCucci?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two quick points. With you reading the minutes for EHS tonight, Madam Chair, I would just like it noted for the general public that the funding for the $1.9 million project for the Petro Pool on Randolph Street, that is not being funded by the Town of Southbridge. It is a contract with the Commonwealth of Mass. And just to follow up, and I'm actually very happy I read this, in our weekly report, Mr. Clark, because of the repeated rejected loads at the landfill, Toriano Trucking is banned from bringing waste to the site. Is that a permanent ban?
Yes.
It is?
Yes. I had a very candid discussion with the Casella folks about a continuous violator, and, you know, what were they going to do about it? And they told me that that was their solution, which I think is what we were searching for, because I think that we need, and I do believe we have, a solid partner that works with us to comply with DEP rules and regulations. I would say, it was interesting that it is a standard practice, is what I was told, to just reject the loads, and that usually is enough of an incentive for people not to continue. But I told them that we needed to do better than just the standard practice, and they did respond. So, I appreciate their efforts, as well as I do appreciate your diligence in following up, because there are a lot of things that get covered in the course of a week, and sometimes, I do pay attention, and I do try to focus on issues that do come up, and I try to do what I can to resolve.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you so much for following through with that, and I think that it's great that Casella is acknowledging, and hopefully, they'll continue. Our monitor, Bob Jones, the waste spotter, will continue, and Anna Smith to monitor trucks that shouldn't be bringing the waste that they do. So, thank you very much, Mr. Clark. I appreciate that. That's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vandal?
Thank you. The drop-off center at the Town Bond on Gulfwood Road for yard waste, for grass, leaves, and branches, should be open this week, no later than Saturday. Number two, the street sweeper has been seen. It's started sweeping the streets, I think it was today. I think both sweepers were out. So, we're going to do our own sweeping, we didn't have to, you know, rent a sweeper this year. So, we're all set on that end. And in the report that we get weekly under the Police Department, over the course of the last two weeks, the Police Department has increased enforcement of Town Bylaw, Section 10-101, failure to place trash in a secure container. The increased enforcement has resulted in more than 50 violations being issued throughout the community. Now, I heard that we have a sergeant going around doing this work, and a sergeant going around doing this work, and getting time and a half. Am I correct?
No. Actually, the sergeant coordinates the enforcement activities, and the officers that are assigned to that are paid out of this fund. I don't know if they are all done on overtime. I believe that the vast majority are on overtime. But the sergeant himself is not necessarily doing it, he's coordinating that activity as resources are available.
So, is he getting time and a half?
If he is doing this above and beyond his standard shift, yes.
That's not, I'm not too satisfied with that. I don't want to be paying no police, I mean, nobody time and a half to be, you know, directing this. We're going to have to, you know, get, sit down at the table and figure this one out. And number four is, the Traffic Commission meeting tomorrow evening at 6:00 at the Community Room Police Station. Number four, citizen request to make portion of Chauton Street, from Lion Streets to Harrington Street, a one-way due to poor visibility coming out of Side Street. I've been using this road for 50 years, I think I've been driving, all right? And I don't see any reasons that you can't see, you have poor visibility coming out of the side streets. So, I mean, a citizen request, you know, one person requested, they put it on an agenda and, you know, ruin the whole street, one-way, I don't think that's going to work. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Just in terms of the process, and it's a good opportunity, the reason why the Traffic Commission was set up, I think it was set up about three years ago when I originally started, was that citizens would have an opportunity to come in, speak with the professionals that are in the field, to kind of talk to them about the good and the bad of making changes to the traffic rules and regs. And then, the Traffic Commission would then submit, if they believe it's warranted, to the PPP, the Subcommittee on that, if a change was warranted. But it's not unusual that we would receive a request, and we would vet that request with the person that submits it. I know in the time that I've been on, which I think I've been on since the origination, as well as the Chief has been on, the Police Chief, you know, we do listen to people, and we do see if things make sense. Sometimes, things make sense, often, they don't necessarily, but we let them know the reason why. But your comments are duly noted.
So, if it doesn't make sense, they can squash it tomorrow night, and that'll be it?
I hate to use the word squash it, but we will talk to the person, and if it doesn't make sense, then we will recommend to that person that it doesn't make sense.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay. Agenda item number 16 is the discussion of the next meeting date, which is Monday, March 26th, at 7:00 PM in Council Chambers. Is that okay with everyone? All right. Moving right along. Agenda item number 17, adjournment?
Second.
All in favor? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.